The COVID-19 pandemic, Governor Walz under Minnesota statute, Chapter 12, Emergency Management, declared a peacetime emergency on March 13th, 2020. The city has determined that an in-person meeting may not be practical or prudent because of the health pandemic. The City of Detroit Lakes meetings will be held via telephone conference call or by other electronic means, as outlined in Minnesota statute 13D dot 021. Members of the public who wish to view the meeting virtually should submit a request at the City of Detroit Lakes by Tuesday, December 8th at 12:00 PM. The City of Detroit Lakes City Council meeting will be a hybrid meeting, taking place with two options. You can attend in person at the Historic Homes Center Ballroom located at 806 Summit Avenue, or attend virtually. Please submit a request to the city. So with that, I'll call the meeting of the regular meeting, the Detroit Lakes City Council, to order. And at this time, I'd like to invite all of you to please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The minutes of the regular city council meeting held November 10th, 2020 are before the council. Does anyone on the council, or anyone in the audience, wish to make any changes to the minutes as they are printed? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
I say move with approval for the minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, and discussion. I'm required to take a roll call vote. Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Winner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
And Bruce is not with us either yet, right? Okay, so, the motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council, and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there any council member, or anyone in the audience, that wishes to make any changes, or remove any items, or add any items to the consent agenda? I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as printed.
Zeeman moves to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, to approve the consent agenda as printed. We'll take a roll call vote. Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
The motion carries. I see a couple people in the audience. Do you folks have an item you want me to move up? Oh, it's, it's one of our new council members. Sir? Lake Forest? That's the first thing on the agenda. So I'll adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed street and utility improvements for the Lake Forest 7th Edition. And John Pratt, are you going to preface this for us?
I am.
Okay.
One second, Mayor. I don't want to leave the meeting.
That is you, Wendy, isn't it?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. We've got a public hearing for Lake Forest 7th Edition Phase 2, Street and Utility Improvements. Purpose of the hearing tonight is a requirement of State Statute 429, since we will be using special assessments as part of the funding mechanism for the project. We'll have an opportunity for input, concerns, questions. I'll go over some of the existing conditions and what the project's going to entail, and some of the costs, how the special assessments are going to shake out, some schedule, and then certainly some time for questions and comments. A little bit on the background, the developer, who's Marty Solomon, has petitioned the city for improvements to what is the final phase of his subdivision. This is something that's been in process for almost 20 years now, I think, various phases. But this will represent the final phase of it. It's about 14 acres of property. This particular project would include about 22 lots. It'd be a combination of single-family homes and twin-home lots. We completed and then adopted the updated preliminary engineering report last month, if you recall. As far as existing infrastructure, it's pretty straightforward. There's sewer and water in streets sort of on the eastern edge of where this project is located. Again, completed between 2002 and 2018. We've got a limited ability to extend any more sanitary sewer from within the development. We're sort of out of grade. There's no stormwater collection in this specific area, but there is treatment provisions that have been incorporated in previous phases. So, as far as the proposed improvement, sanitary sewer, a little bit unique in this case. Like I said, we have to actually extend this from outside of the development. I've got a drawing in a minute that shows this. But we're out of grade within the development, so we're actually going to be extending the sewer from a lift station that's located at the corner of South Shore Drive and 270th Avenue. And we'll go south on 270th, and then cut across the new city park and get into the development. So that sewer system will consist of not 10-foot, 10-inch mains and 8-inch mains, manholes, 4-inch service laterals. Even with this, we noted that there will likely be some basements in the far reaches of the development that would still require a sewage ejection pump for a basement. In other words, we can't service the basements by gravity sewer. There's a handful of lots that we've noted that that may be difficult. Water main, 6-inch, 8-inch, and 12-inch mains, some hydrants, valves, 1-inch service laterals, sort of the usual there. We will also install that water main down a portion of 270th, simply because we're going to be there putting in that sewer main anyhow, so it seems prudent to get that water main installed, since we're going to be ripping up the road and disturbing all that anyway, even though technically that water main is not required to service the development. It will, however, provide a second connection and feed point to that development. Right now, there's just one, so having a redundant loop into that development is certainly Here's a picture. All the, it's a little tough to see on the screen, but the green and the blue lines that you can see there, that's sort of the alignment for the sanitary sewer and the water main that we're planning on putting in. Stormwater, we'll install a storm sewer collection system on all the new streets. Treatment rate control provided by an existing infiltration basin, sort of in the central part of that subdivision. That was mostly finished up with the last phase. And then we probably will have to have a small infiltration area kind of in the southern portion of the new park by 270th Avenue. That's going to be there to provide treatment to the runoff from 270th. Since we're going to reconstruct that, we have to treat that in accordance with both city and watershed regulations. Streets, pretty typical for a subdivision, 36-foot wide, urban section, so curb and gutter. That's what we put in, have put in historically in all of our subdivisions. The north end of 270th Avenue will also be reconstructed. That'll be a little bit wider, 41 feet, providing just a little bit better opportunity for some on-street parking, should there be a big event at that park or something of that effect. And then also, I wanted to point out that we will have a street that will connect into the development from 270th Avenue, kind of in the southwest corner of the development. You can see on the screen now where that connection is. So, this also points out sort of the limitations of the improvements on 270th Avenue. I think it's right around 800 feet or so, south of South Shore Drive, is sort of the limits of what we're planning to do right now. So, costs, again, not going to read all of these numbers, but we are looking at a project that's just shy of $1.3 million. Larger items there, obviously, being the street at a little over half a million in itself. Financing, this will be funded by the city in special assessments, in accordance with the city's special assessment policy. The way the policy reads for this project, 100% of the costs for sanitary sewer and water main are assessable. The city does pay for any oversized mains or looping. Service laterals are 100% assessed. Stormwater, new stormwater service is assessed at a rate of 50%, and then the city's picking up the balance of that 50%, so that would be the stormwater within the development. Any stormwater on 270th, we would consider that 100% city share. The street, any new street, so again, the streets within the subdivision, 100% of the costs are assessed. And then on 270th, where we are reconstructing a road, that's a 50/50 cost split between special assessments and the city. And then there'll be some street lighting that the city also picks up. Cost distribution, I wanted to point this out, it's a little bit unique. Really, yeah, there's a lot of costs on 270th that are assessable, I've kind of outlined those. But because of the circumstances, the city really ends up assuming those costs, at least for the time being. On one side of the road, we have a city park, and so, yeah, we can, we'll assess ourselves like we always do, but we're taking money out of one pocket and putting it in the other. So we'll assess ourselves for that. And then on the other side of the street, that's all undeveloped property that's currently outside of the corporate limits, so we don't have the ability to assess that. That would be a postponed assessment, meaning at such time that that property comes into the corporate limits, we could then go through an assessment proceeding at that time to recover those costs. But in the meantime, it really shakes out to be a city cost. And so that's what that looks like here. And the city costs on 270th are shown under the city share column here. So the city is looking at a cost share on this one of about $400,000, which is unusually high for a subdivision project, where we usually have a very small cost participation. This one, because of 270th, we have a pretty significant share, at about $400,000. The balance of it at about $850,000 being assessed.
John, I've got a question on the assess, but go back to your last slide. Is that 867,000, is that assessable immediately now, or is any of that?
Yep, I'll get to the terms, just right quick.
Okay, I was just wondering about that, okay.
If I can hold on to that, thanks, John. I'll cover that. So, we distribute those assessable costs, again, in accordance with the assessment policy. In this case, it's fairly straightforward. It basically shakes out to be a per-lot assessment. We take those assessable costs that you see and divide them by the number of lots or units that we have available. You can see the math up here and how that works out. So, on a single-family lot, you'd be looking at a special assessment of right around $36,000. Twin-home lots being a little bit higher, because there's two sets of service laterals to them, at $40,000. And those do not include any deferred assessments that might have already been levied on some of this property. So as far as the terms, to answer Alderman Zeeman's question, the developer has to prepay 25% of the assessable cost prior to awarding the project. So as we move ahead, and before we award a contract, he would be required to pay 25% of that cost. The balance is assessed over a 20-year period following substantial completion, or the developer has the option, this was a change that the council made here in the last couple of years, has the option for a five-year deferral followed by a 15-year term. So it's still a 20-year term effectively, but we're just condensing it into 15 years, with the front end being a five-year deferral. Does that answer your question?
No, the question is, what do you know, that 270th, is how long is that street going to be? How far along down the road does it go?
It goes down...
To the edge of, to the ending of Marty Solomon's property?
To the south edge of the park, if you can see it. It's a little hard, but the area that's grayed there, Ron?
Yeah, so about, in blocks, about how many blocks would that be?
It's about a block.
One block. So is that high for just one block?
Yep. Yep.
When that other property on the west side comes in, John, that would...
And it's also, Ron, let me, sorry, Mayor. The city's share at 400,000 represents here the cost for 270th, but also, we have some costs in the subdivision.
In the subdivision, too.
We have 50% of the stormwater costs also in there.
So, so we are talking, but that deferred part, for that piece of land across from the park?
Yep.
We don't know when that's going to come into the city at all.
We really don't have any way to predict that. I know between Kelsey, myself, and other staff, I mean, there's been on-again, off-again discussions with that property owner for various reasons, and I think every time, it's been a pretty consistent, "We have no interest in developing, we have no interest in annexation at this point." You know, logic would tell you, I think, that at some point, it seems pretty likely that that would come in, but at this point, there's no way to predict that.
So we would collect back some funds if that happened in the future?
Correct. I think, yeah, I covered the terms, the schedule is on the screen. Basically, you know, we have our hearing tonight. We would move into the design over the course of the winter, looking at bidding and awarding a contract later this spring, and then construction over the summer, followed by the assessment hearing next fall. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, is there any, anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments? Yes, sir. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, and we'd like your name and address for our minutes, please.
My name's Brad Erickson. My address is 2103 270th. So my property borders the south end of the park. So, a couple things, I had talked to Kelsey earlier. Part of the reason we got sent a letter about this is to let us know what's going on, but there was also wondering if there's any interest in the rest of us extending onto those, you know, extending onto those utilities. At this point, I'm not interested. I don't know if any of the other property owners are, but I do have some questions on where you're going to stop with your project. Is there going to be a grade difference in the road, since you're going one part to the other?
To answer your question, Brad, as we get into design, I'll have to figure that out a little bit. You know, knowing that road, yeah, there's part of me that says it'd be nice to maybe make some adjustment, but the challenge being, we got to tie back in somewhere. So if we do end up lowering the road, let's say, we would have to maybe go a little bit further than what I'm showing to sort of taper back in, and then at such time that we go that next step past you guys, we'd have to come back and sort of redo, and you end up having overlapping projects a bit. I don't have an answer for you right now as to whether or not we're going to lower that thing or not.
Do you know, is there any plan then for just further overlay on the rest of 270th? Since now you're going to be adding in another exit point, entrance point into Lake Forest, just because of traffic flow and...
Well, the most direct answer is no. We don't have any plans right now. That's not to say that that couldn't happen. Couple of the challenges, I guess, that I would see with it is, first off, we actually own that roadway jointly with the township, because it's the border. So we have one half, they have one half. Obviously, this area we're going to redo, we're going to redo the whole road, because we're the ones out there ripping it up. As far as continuing on with an overlay, we would have to get the township on board with that, and that's a possibility. My reservation in doing that would be, we'd want to have some pretty hard discussions with your neighborhood, to make sure we don't make an investment in the road, and then five years from now, everybody says, "Hey, we'd like to connect," and now we didn't really live out the life of that. But there's certainly a discussion that could be had.
Yeah, I mean, there's three of us over there that have, you know, private wells and sewer systems that are functioning just fine, so there's no benefit for me to hook up at this point. I do realize that the city will probably be expanding out there at one point, like you said. I can see maybe at that point, to maybe expand the services, especially if that whole property across from me gets fully developed. You know, then at that point, I think it changes things, but I don't really see the benefit as a property owner right now for that to be, you know, run out to me. So I don't know if anybody else has provided any input.
Yeah. Mayor, council, if I could, I did get one email from Jay Hanson. He's at 2111 270th Avenue. I'll try to paraphrase his email a little bit. Kind of reiterated exactly what you were saying about, he's got a well on septic, he actually replaced the septic drain field in spring of 2019, so he's fine. He does state that 270th Avenue is in need of repair. He talks about the intersection of South Shore Drive, has potholes. He's talking about how it hasn't, you know, only received light maintenance over the last 17 years. I'll just kind of read this last part. He said, "Streetlights would be welcomed, as would better placement on the speed limit signage. Traffic is always fast on our 30 mile per hour street." And lastly, he just says, yes, he'd be interested in finding out what the estimate would be for the cost of putting water and sewer in, but he was really noncommittal whether or not he really wanted it. So I'll probably email him back if John gives me just some estimates of what that cost would be, but I think he's kind of in the same boat, I think.
Yeah.
And I would just add to that, that, I mean, if we're fairly confident that we're not going to make some sort of improvement in the way of sewer and water, you know, is there room, again, for discussion about maybe a sort of a minimalistic improvement to the road? I wouldn't want to go and put curb and gutter and rebuild it, but maybe a reclaim or something like that. There would probably be a special assessment tied to that. That's just standard for the city, to have a special assessment. So there'd be some assessments to the neighborhood, the city does pay a portion, and I'm sort of speaking out of school here, but we would probably look to the township as well to at least participate on that, since we don't have sole ownership of the road.
Yeah.
So if we can get those things together, I'm certainly willing to...
Yeah, that's...
Now would be a good time to do that.
Correct.
With the project.
Yeah, the streetlight thing, too, I mean, since we are part of the city, I mean, I would be, you know, open to that, too, because now there is some lighting there with the park, but, you know, just because it's all going to tie in there, there'd be a lot more traffic flow once that development gets fully full with houses, so I think that would be good. But, yeah, that road is, we do get a lot of traffic, and speed is definitely an issue, so, you know, anything that could be done there would be highly appreciated, so. Seems to be treated as a racetrack for some reason, so. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there further questions or comments? And they can be from the council as well. Ron?
I've got a question. Is 270th Avenue currently a township road right now?
It's effectively jointly owned between the city and the county, 50/50, because it's the court, it's the boundary.
It is the boundary.
So when we have it as a boundary, we own one half, they own one half, technically.
How far south?
To the south edge of the development, because everything, where Brad lives, there's about four or five houses there, and it lines up with the south edge of the...
So just part of 270th?
Just part of it, just to the edge of, the southern edge of the Lake Forest subdivision.
Well, the question to have, is there a way to get water and sewer and electricity into that park site, coming in on the front, instead of going down 270th, and just leave it as part of the township, and not do anything with that road totally until that does get developed?
The answer would be, you know, if I understand you correctly, Ron, you're asking, can we sort of come cross-country, across the park, more on the north end?
Yes.
Leave 270th alone? The answer is yes. The reason I probably wouldn't recommend that is, we're going to be faced with similar costs.
Okay.
You don't have the costs associated with reconstructing 270th, you save that right now, but down the road, you actually are going to end up spending more, because, again, only assuming that someday, we're going to go south there. And then you all of a sudden have redundant utilities running parallel with one another down 270th. Do you understand?
Well, I understand that, but we're getting a lot of these roads that we don't know when it's going to happen, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, and it's a lot of money for taxpayers have to pay that that are currently in the town right now. Somebody's got to pay the bill, and it's the current owner, north side, south side, wherever you live, somebody's going to pay that bill, and that's why I'm asking that.
Right. Yeah, the answer to your question is yes, we could go cross-country. I just, I probably wouldn't advise it, because all we're saving is the cost to redo 270th. We're really not going to save anything on the sewer and the water, because one way or another, I still got to get to the same point.
Yeah.
It's just a route, so that's why I would say no in this case, in my opinion.
Further questions or comments?
I have a question, Matt, it's Jamie. How do we limit our liability on the homes where functioning sewage pumps are required if they fail?
Kelsey, are you going to field that?
Yeah, I can take a swing at it. Kelsey might have to come in on the backside here, but it's not uncommon at all to have a sewage pump for a lower level of a home. It's not uncommon at all. There's just a lot of cases where we can't get a gravity system that is deep enough out in the street to get gravity service to a basement. And a lot of those cases, what it is, is where a home is situated well below the roadway, for example. A lot of them happen around a lake, where you have the road up high, you know, the land tapers down, and, yeah, we can get gravity service into the upper level of the home, but not the lower. And ultimately, those pumps, yeah, if there's a failure, that lands on the homeowner. It's, that's a piece of equipment that is owned and operated by the homeowner. It's really no different than if they had a blockage in their sewage system within their house. Does that answer it, Jamie?
Jamie?
Sort of. Sort of, I just, you know, I just worry that people don't get it, that this is, you know, this is not, this is mandatory, and if they don't do it, their homes are going to flood, and then they come to us, and then... No, I have that system at my house. The first, my main floor goes by gravity feed. My lower level has a septic system, or has a pump that pumps sewage upside and joins the sewer line. I've had that pump fail a couple of times.
Right, it happens all the time.
Yep. Floated back into my house, too. I cleaned it up and I paid. That's just kind of the way it is.
But there's no other alternative, John, is there?
I won't say no other alternative. I mean, we can generally solve just about any problem for the right amount of money. The challenge becomes, in this case, to cure this issue. It involves the installation of another lift station, and that would be the third lift station within about a thousand-foot diameter, which is really a lot. And, you know, another lift station would be, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000 or $300,000. And usually, I don't get to that point of suggesting we have to do that until we can no longer provide gravity service to an upper level or a slab on grade, then I would say, okay, we're into the point where we need to do that. And there'd have to be enough properties to benefit from that lift station.
Further questions or comments? If not, that public hearing is closed, and we can give consideration now to a resolution ordering the preparation of plans and specifications.
So we have the consideration to a resolution ordering the preparation of plans and specs for the street and utility improvements for Lake Forest 7th Edition, and Public Works reviewed and ISO moved.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Further discussion on the matter. I'll call a roll call vote. Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Dan, are you with us?
Oh, I am. Aye, your honor.
Thank you. Sukie?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
The motion carries. I believe that brings us up to the Community Development Committee Agenda. Chairman, winner.
Thank you, your honor. Item A is just, we've been having an ongoing discussion on fence regulations and setbacks. We're to the point where we're making technical corrections now, our staff are doing that, so hopefully we'll have something to bring to the council in a month or two. Item B is a resolution, it's a corrected resolution approving a variance on the parking spaces. Now, I'm going to let Larry explain why we need this corrected resolution. Oh, Larry, you're muted.
This will be better, I'm sure.
Yes, I can hear you now.
We need to correct the resolution, because it needs to include a statement at the very end, be it further resolved that the city council of the City of Detroit Lakes has hereby waived the $2,500 per space payment in lieu of parking spaces. This was intended in the original resolution, but it somehow fell out of there, and so we need to adopt this new one that includes that revision.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Larry. The Community Development Committee did review this, recommended approval and ISO move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a corrected resolution regarding the parking situation at thirteen oh five Highway Ten West. Discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Sukie?
Aye.
Wanner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you, your honor. Item C is a resolution to approve a conditional use permit to allow a short-term rental of a two-bedroom home and a one-bedroom guest cottage at nine oh seven North Shore Drive. Planning Commission recommended approval, as did the CDC. I'm going to also move approval of this conditional use permit.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at nine oh seven North Shore Drive. Discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Was there anyone at the meeting that objected to this or by mail or anything like that?
You're talking about the Planning Commission or the CDC?
Both.
Uh, nobody at the CDC. I can't remember the Planning Commission, if there was a a letter or not.
Don't recall any letters. I do recall, I had a phone call from John Holland, who was just concerned about issues related to short-term rentals, whether they would be loud parties and things like that. But he didn't specifically object.
The only comment we had on this particular permit or the conditional use permit was that it called for four bolt slips and we reduced that to two. Nothing else came up at the Planning Commission and it was approved unanimously.
Okay, you know, just a comment. I, you know, I think when we did this, we had nothing in place and we felt like we needed to get something. And I and I think that's true. But if I'm correct, there's kind of two different scenarios here. One is that a homeowner rents out their place for a couple of weeks in a year. And and another one is that the property owner rents it out sort of in a serial way. And I I wish that we would take a look at this and maybe separate those things out a little bit as two different permits. Because I think there's a big difference between a homeowner that rents their place for a couple of weeks in a year and someone who owns a property as an investment property.
Okay.
And I'm not, I know we have to vote on this, yes, because it's, there's nothing in place right now, you know? But I I just think that for the future, there's a difference there that has to be made.
Yeah, I I think I think that makes some sense. So, Dan, would you have your committee review that in a future meeting coming up?
Your honor, I'm sorry, I interrupted. Who's that?
I was gonna say, would you have your committee look at that situation that Jamie's talking about at some future meeting?
Yep, I'd like to have a little discussion with Jamie on that offline somewhere to find out more about her concerns. I know Dan Josephson has brought up a concern in the past about the number of rentals we have. So I think an offline discussion, something like a meeting, just to get information would be good. But I'd like to bring this to the Planning Commission first, your honor.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense. Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, I have the same same discussion that Jamie has, and I brought it up when this first happened. And we said we did need that protection. But I think there are two different types of these rentals, and I think that they need to be scrutinized on who is in them and and the different type of situations. So I think the more we can, it certainly protects the neighborhoods. And I, if I have one of these houses next to mine, I want to make sure that the city's doing all they can to protect the rights of the resident next door to them.
Sure.
Something has to be done.
Okay, Dan, thanks.
All right, thank you. So we do still need to vote on this, your honor.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Bly?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Wanner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you, your honor. We, the next item D is also a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at eleven sixty-two South Shore Drive. CDC recommends approval and ISO move.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at eleven sixty-two South Shore Drive. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call roll call vote. Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Wanner?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, your honor. Item E is a resolution to approve both the preliminary and final plat of Common Interest Community Ninety-four, which is Lake's toy storage on Little, at Little Detroit. Again, the Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously, as did the CDC and ISO move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the preliminary and final plat of CIC number ninety-four, Lake's toy storage at Little Detroit. Discussion? Roll call vote. Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Wanner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, your honor. Item F is a resolution to approve the final plat of Benny and Iola Peterson Place. This is just a split of a property into two buildable lots. Again, CDC recommends approval and ISO move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the final plat of Benny and Iola Peterson Place. Discussion? Roll call vote. Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Wanner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And item G, your honor, we're deferring until January. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Dan.
Need to bring up anything else tonight.
Pardon me?
Unless staff need to bring up anything else tonight.
Okay. Any other items that the staff has for the, okay. We'll move on to the Public Works Committee, and I think the chairman this evening is Natalie.
Yes, so the first item we have on our agenda is an update on Washington Avenue South and the North Shore Drive intersection project. So I will call on our city engineer, John Pratt, for that update.
Mayor and council, one second here. I'm gonna share my screen again. Okay, so the the purpose of this item was really just to get the rest of the council up to speed on where we're at with some things at the North Shore Drive and and South Washington intersection. If you recall, past summer, we worked over a series of meetings at some various enhancements and things that the council wanted to see at this intersection in the way of beautification and streetscapes, et cetera. We sort of got the bulk of that stuff decided, but left a few things hanging. The the two major items that are still left, one is the monuments that you see on your screen that would sort of flank the roadway. We kind of left those alone. I am still working with some vendors on trying to get some concepts to finalize that. Hopefully, I'll have something in in January for you to to look at there. But this evening, what I wanted to present was a couple of concepts that have been developed by a landscape architect for that plaza area on the, it'd be the southeast corner of that intersection. At the time, we weren't really sure what the fate of the sailboat was. We did manage to get that out of its base and its foundation on the beach. It's gonna get refurbished sometime this spring with the idea of reincorporating that into this intersection. We would take the existing park sign that's there now, move that over towards the entrance of the park, and then have that space here to do some other things with. So this is what the original concept looked like, and we just really didn't nail anything down here. This was just where we left it. Now I've got a few other ideas. I don't have ideas. I have a few other concepts that I wanted to at least make the council aware of. Here's one that, you know, has, let let me back up. Don't look at too much detail in these. These are still preliminary. The next month, we'll come back and have something that looks much prettier, I guess, like this. But from a concept standpoint, you know, this one's got some colored concrete with some different bands running through here and and sort of a pedestal for the the sailboat. It has some some vegetation and trees that sort of run alongside, and you have some bollards here sort of protecting this plaza area from traffic and things like that. Here's another view of it. Second concept, this one has more vegetation and landscaping sort of surrounding most of the plaza away from the street. You still have those bollards there providing some protection from traffic. And then you have a sailboat sculpt, or the sailboat in the center of this plaza and kind of a sail-shaped foundation. There's a pergola that sort of goes along the backside here. Again, don't read too much into the pergola in terms of, it likely wouldn't be black or anything like that. But just conceptually, there'd be a pergola there. Here's another view of that same thing. And then the third and final concept is, you know, again, a circular base of sorts. And you've got kind of this concrete wall that runs along here. Presumably, we would do some sort of colored and stamped concrete along the street, have the wall, have the vegetation, et cetera. So same concept, different view. What I'm after, I guess, these are sort of tough settings to have a whole lot of dialogue. But I guess I'm looking for feedback from the entire council. We had a pretty lengthy discussion at Public Works yesterday. But if any of the council members have comments, thoughts, et cetera, related to these that you want to pass on to the committee and to myself, the intent would be to go back to the landscape architect, provide a little bit more direction, and come back with one or two final concepts next month so that we can incorporate this design into the final work next year.
You want comments tonight?
I I will take comments anytime. Yes.
I like number one.
Mayor, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Natalie and I both sat in the subcommittee looking at this whole West Lake, or West, excuse me, Washington Avenue project. What we kind of came up was the concept two is what we liked. A couple of different reasons. It gave some vertical depth to it with that pergola there. Like I said, we're not set on that exact thing, just something along those lines. Uh, we also like the vegetative state around the the curb there, kind of, A, masking the bollards, but also, two, keeping the pedestrians out of there, knowing that they'd have to use the crosswalk to the north there or head down south. We also didn't want to encroach on more green space in the park than we had to. So that was between Natalie and I, the the concept that the subcommittee liked the best.
Any other comments, Ron?
Well, I've got a comment from a person that lives on that direction. And they thought, now with the lights in the middle there, they thought that looked good. And they said, what, they said, are they gonna put some, I said, we're gonna put plantings in there. And and he thought that if we get too much, it could be too cluttered. And now when I'm here, and we're gonna put more plantings over the side, sometimes less is better than more. But the the thing that I'm concerned about, and when this all came out with roundabouts, we brought up the deal about pedestrian traffic and what's gonna happen with pedestrians that are trying to cross. Now, already on the M and H intersection there on Willow and Washington, I've had calls about people trying to cross the road because we've got a marker that says it's a crossing, but we don't have the white lines because it's a colored pavement. And the people aren't sure where they're supposed to cross, but the traffic doesn't seem to recognize that sign. And yesterday at the meeting, John, you mentioned we can light that up or make it blink or something to let people realize that that is a crossing for people. What I questioned of this, of what we have right now, would would meet the American Disabilities Act for people crossing with wheelchairs and that sort of thing, because these cars are coming off that pretty fast. And then I'm I'm looking at this one at North Shore where we're gonna put our pedestrian crossings, and we're gonna have the same thing. We don't want to mark up with whites. Well, I think public safety has got to trump the colored streets. We've got to have something to let people know that this is crossings and let the cars know for public safety that there are people trying to cross there. And right now, people aren't recognizing that. And and myself on this crossing at down at M and H, twice now, when I've been going around it, people have come down Willow, twice have almost been hit by, I hadn't stabbed them with a brick, because they think it's still a thoroughfare street. And I I just think we've got to watch some safety issues on this thing. And I know we're talking about decoration, but I think we've got to be aware of this public safety factor of this thing, too, with the cars moving as fast as they are. They're not, they're not going slow. They're going pretty fast.
Further comments?
If I could, Mayor, Ron, I hundred percent agree with you with public safety. I think, in my mind, it's just driver education. The more they drive it, the more we use it, the more familiar it gets, the better it's gonna be. But also, too, with the with the whites, with the white pedestrian crossings there, if you drive, because we installed kind of those parking nodes by Sanford and Weem chiropractor, correct? And and Mr. Pratt, we did? So, and I thought that's where it was. Thank you. I think it's it's more dangerous there because we have gray concrete and these white blocks. You can't see the white blocks at all. At least here, we're using colored concrete to differentiate it and make it more known and visible. So I think this is improvement, even with those white blocks and the gray concrete.
Well, Matt, I'm, or I'm not getting calls because people, because I had two women call. One was with a child, and they tried getting across, and nobody's slowing down. They don't see you. And and if we can light these things up, and and John, you said yesterday, we can buy something that lights them up and flashes that people know there is a crossing there. But we we need to do something for public safety there. I just, there there is no doubt about it, because trying to, trying to go across the street on any one of those, and it's gonna be worse down by the park, because you've got a lot of pedestrian traffic, a lot of kids. But trying to put a pedestrian trail and trying to come off with these cars going around. I I I just think we need to be more proactive on this so we don't have somebody getting run over.
Well, regarding that, maybe we should put this on the Public Safety Committee for discussion, future discussion. If there are other options, we can at least talk about it. So why don't we do that, Ron? Put it on the Public Safety. Further comments on the on the concepts, though?
Can I con, can I make a comment about the concept?
Yes.
I like number two. I mean, that would be my favorite something on that border. I'm still not a fan of the of the big obelisk-type gateway things, especially. It's nice on the one side. I think it just there, I think it clutters that whole thing up and detracts from the sailboat.
So, John, did you say it was your intention to bring back two concepts?
Yeah, my intention would be to bring back concepts on those.
Does anybody have any interest in looking at more detailed number one?
Yeah, can you go back and look at those again, John? That's one right there.
I guess the reason I like it is, I like the trees. I like having some green in there.
Yeah.
But.
And we're gonna have green, you said, on that grass area, right? That's where it's not showing now.
Yeah, I mean, that that effectively has trees.
Yes.
It's the city park, so it.
Why don't you come back with one and two then?
Okay. I'm I'm getting some feedback here, I think, that's given me a little bit to work with. And I'll talk to the committee members a little bit more and try to come back with something.
Anything else on that, updating South Washington North Shore Drive?
Nothing, Mayor.
Natalie?
Thank you. Then we're moving on to the update on the Washington Ballpark, and I will call on Kelsey to do an update.
Mayor and council, keep this relatively short. As you may recall, the the council has contracted with BHH Partners as an architect firm to work on some concepts for the ballpark grandstand. Staff did meet with the architect a couple of weeks ago, present some kind of neat concepts, not just for the grandstand, but for the the park as a whole. We've asked him to go back and at least put some numbers to what those concepts would would cost. I expect maybe by the end of December, he would have that ready to go back to the committee. With the holidays, maybe it won't be until January till we get the committee back together and then basically present what those concepts are with some rough idea of what the cost would be with them, too.
Kelsey, do we know, is the thing structurally in condition where we can remodel it? Or are these concepts gonna be a brand-new building?
No, the architects worked with, if you remember, we had a structural engineer look at it eighteen months ago. The architect has had some discussions with him. The idea is basically preserve the, what I call the superstructure, the main steel members. I know Apex is doing. preserve the, what I call the superstructure, the main steel members. I know Apex is doing some more surveying on those columns to see if they're moving again this winter. Last winter, we did that. We didn't see much movement on those columns, which is a good thing. So basically, all their concepts right now are based upon utilizing the existing structure in some sort of major facelift remodeling. But like I said, they're also including, when we met with the rest of the committee, it includes school members and members of the baseball association. Looked at kind of the whole thing, too, of the field about fencing and, you know, drainage and lighting, all those things. And he kind of put that together in an overall package with some concepts.
How does the historical stuff come into play with this?
It's a great question. So, one of the reasons why we hired BHH is that they've had experience in this realm. So once we kind of get settled on maybe what we want to do, he would basically would float that by its ship, well, I can't remember, State Historical Preservation Office, for their feedback, and basically, you know, get their blessing before we go too far into it. But we kind of need to identify, first of all, what we want to propose to them and get their thoughts.
Okay. Any further questions on the Washington Ballpark?
And then we also had an update on the Public Works Building, or brief update.
Yeah, it's pretty brief. We haven't done much with that project. I mean, if you remember, you know, we had a discussion about a facility plan. We kind of adopted a rough facility plan of, you know, what our timeline was. A few things probably derailed that, of course. We have the PD project going. I know personally, for me, that's derailed some of the time I've had to dedicate to that project. But I think the other part of it is the county. You know, the county, at one point, was proceeding with their project up there. That's been put on hold. So throw COVID on top of that, new Public Works Director, we're kind of, I don't want to say back to square one, but I want to work with the, we have two new council members coming on. We have a new Public Works Director. Like to talk about that when we do our capital improvement plan here early next year, and kind of dust off the old study, and I think get the architect involved, and maybe don't, again, I don't want to say starting from scratch, but, you know, I think it's good to maybe review all the concepts that we had before and make sure that that's still what we want to do.
Okay. Questions for Kelsey? Discussion? Natalie?
Then we have an update, or end-of-year update, from our Public Works Director, Sean King. He, it was also emailed out this afternoon, an update to all the council.
Bruce asked me to bring a, just kind of an end-of-year report from Public Works to our Public Works Committee, and thought I should share it here. So I'll go through it real briefly. The Public Works Department is responsible for overall maintenance of streets, sidewalks, alleys, storm sewers, sanitary sewer, parks, trails, arena, outdoor rink, animal control, forestry, and weed control. Our department consists of 20 full-time employees and approximately 16 part-time employees. Some of the projects that we completed in 2020 was, they're working on the Heartland Trail. Then also in the parks, we completed our second year of buckthorn removal at Sucker Creek. We do have a $50,000 Parks and Trails Legacy Fund Grant for that. That'll be completed in June 30, 2021. South Shore Park Shelter was built, along with the parking lot and trails. Plans to complete the playground, football, and tennis courts in 2021. A new irrigation system was installed at the soccer field, over a mile of pipe. 18-hole disc golf course at Long Lake Park was completed. The old softball fields, the infield at the dog park were removed, and areas were seeded to provide more grass for dogs to enjoy, and also planted some trees in there. The skateboard park was repaired and reconfigured. Downtown Crossing Parking Lot Islands were cleaned, remulched, and new sprinklers, plantings, and trees were added. Leaving a legacy program was implemented this year. The program provides an opportunity for citizens to donate park benches, picnic tables, picnic shelters. We did receive some donations: three picnic tables, 10 benches, one bike rack, and one bike fixation station. Then there, you'll see our park board met and come up with the priority list for 2020. Number one was mapping and marketing. Two was pavilion upgrades. Three was finish the multi-use trails. Four, develop an Nordic loop. And five was the Washington Ballpark. Larry's pathway trail from Langford Street through the city park was completed in 2020. Then in streets, in 2020, there was 7,087 miles of streets swept, removing 4,081 yards of debris as part of our MS4 mandate. Every year, we inspect private and public property for diseased and dangerous trees. This year, 107 private and 44 city trees were removed, and 75 trees were planted on city property. Sidewalk, curb, and gutter and approaches were inspected. Those are inspected yearly. In 2020 repairs, there were 56 private and public properties that needed work. We inspected 26 outfalls, nine structural BMPs, cleaned six storm retention ponds, and clear-cut trees and brush from 18 ponds, and that is still ongoing. We're still working on some ponds. There was 2.75 miles of streets that were seal-coated, and 13.66 miles of streets were crack-sealed this year. And I did include some maps for both the crack sealing and the seal coating. Public Works handled 343 service calls through the Ncode Reporting System, 45 animal calls, 59 pothole and road issues, 29 weed and high grass complaints, 17 sanitary and storm sewer calls, 14 signage issues, plus many miscellaneous issues. We have provided services as needed during the COVID-19 outbreak to help businesses and residential deal with the constant changing situations with additional porta-potties, safety precautions, keeping our parks and facilities up to date with signage and cleaning, and providing outdoor seating for restaurants. Events and activities were limited this year, but we're ready for a great 2021.
Sounds like you had a busy 2020.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Sean. And if you wouldn't mind emailing that to me, too, because I'll use some of that good stuff in my state-of-the-city address.
Yes, Mayor, and now I'll actually give you a little more...
Okay, good. Thank you. Any comments or anything on Sean's report? I think we can go a little longer here, Natalie, before we have to do the truth in taxation at 6:01, so go ahead.
Right, I think next one, I'll go quick. Thank you. So we have the consideration for a resolution for the street utilities to Willow, Fraser, Fraserian Homes, and John Pratt will provide a little update on that.
Mayor and council, I'm going to once again share my screen. Oops, if Carrie lets me. So, I'm not going to go through this in, we went through this in pretty good detail yesterday. Just gave the Public Works Committee a pretty good update of where we're heading with the large project next year, which is going to include Willow Street, Fraserie Street, and Holmes Street. Maybe with your permission, Mayor and Natalie, I'm going to kind of roll this along with the next item F into a little bit of a discussion here.
Okay, why don't we...
Or do you want to wait?
Why don't we wait, John?
Yep.
Because I think we're going to end up going over our time a little bit. Why don't we go ahead and go to the Finance Committee? And Madeline, can we take at least one or two items? It won't take a lot of time. We've only got a few minutes here.
We sure can. Carrie just needs to put it up on the screen.
Why don't you either take C or D? How's that?
Yep, that's fine. Actually, we'll just start with B. I don't think there's any, anything to talk about there. Consideration to a resolution approving the 2021 fee schedule relative to various license and rental fees. These fees have not been changed very much from the previous year, with just the exception of a couple new ones added. The Finance Committee reviewed them this afternoon and moves to approve that fee schedule.
Second. Okay, the motion's been made, the second, to approve the 2021 fee schedule. Discussion? We do this every year, don't we, Kelsey?
Yep.
Because I know a few years ago, we kind of let it slide, and then we had to raise those fees up quite a bit. And by doing it annually, I think that's just good planning. So, roll call, vote. Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Bligh?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Mark Sirikson?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, we're at 6 o'clock. Do you want me to just start in?
Yeah, why don't we just wait before we get back into the Finance Committee, because I'm gonna... What am I going to do? Is this a public hearing?
Yes.
It's just a public discussion, right? It's not a public hearing?
Right. So, Mayor, what we usually do is, you'll pick it Heidi, and she'll do her truth in taxation presentation. And yes, we're supposed to take comments from the public regarding our 2021 tax levy.
So it's kind of like a public hearing?
Yeah.
And it's 6:01, so at this time, I'm going to open up a public discussion of the 2021 budget tax levy pursuant to the truth in taxation requirements. And I will call on our Finance Officer, Heidi.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and any taxpayers or citizens that might be tuning in. I'll start this off just by apologizing. My PowerPoint presentation skills are not as advanced as my finance skills are. Being a finance person, I'm a little more into numbers and that side of my brain.
Well, if you're going to be weak on something, I think you picked the right thing.
Right, right, right. So the creative side lacks us a bit, but here we go. So, first, I kind of just wanted to go over, what do your property tax dollars pay for? So, on your tax bill, you'll see there are a number of different categories, and I have them kind of laid out here. There's Becker County, the City of Detroit Lakes, the School District, and then also Special Taxing Districts. And taking a look at the approximate average of those bills, it's split pretty darn close to a third, a third, a third between the county, the city, and the school district. There is a little bit that does go to Special Taxing Districts, to the watershed, and then the county EDC. So that's what your property tax dollars pay for. Sorry, my computer is giving me the blue wheel of death here. And it's kind of frozen now.
Are you logged into the server?
I am. Okay, sorry, guys. I'll try to bring this back up again.
I think we got kicked off the network.
This, and I will screen share again. Okay. And we're back. Okay. So, that's kind of just a summary of what your property tax dollars pay for. Next, I just wanted to kind of give you the tour of your actual tax statement. This is a 2020 statement. So your next one for next year is going to look a little different. Generally, they just change the colors around a little bit. But up in the upper right-hand corner is where you'll find your estimated market value for your property, any homestead exclusion you may have, and then also information about your taxable market value, whether or not your property is homesteaded, the property type classification. And then down below is all the tax information. So you'll see, under numeral five, there is Becker County, Detroit Lakes, State General Tax, that's really only for commercial industrial properties, the School District, and then Special Taxing Districts. And then if you have any special assessments, those are down below. So, as you can see in this property, Detroit Lakes, the city portion was about $600, $678 of their total taxes due of 1932. So, again, about that third. So, going into 2021's budget, the Budget and Finance Committee discussed some goals and what they would like to see in the 2021 budget. What we came up with was a couple of key priorities, and then just overall fiscal responsibility. So, keeping the levy as low as possible, but not cutting too deeply as to affect future years really negatively, because that just ends up compounding issues. But also, while we're doing that, being mindful of businesses struggling currently, and the, just that commercial property taxes are quite high, and there is that, you know, state tax portion on there as well. We also want to keep in mind maintaining a healthy fund balance to ensure our financial stability going forward, and then ensuring fair charges for services and appropriate fees. A couple of the main priorities we talked about this year was exploring some changes to the fire department. They've had a difficult time attracting and retaining volunteer firefighters. So, to do that, we've implemented a per-hour pay structure for the firefighters responding to calls, and we're hoping that that is a little more incentive for folks to stay with the fire department and join. We're also catching up on some deferred maintenance for the fire department. That building now is 20 years old. We just paid off the debt on it. And as with anything, right, when you pay it off, it does need a little bit of love. So, doing a few things to catch up on some deferred maintenance with that facility, and then also just with their equipment itself. And then, along with that, we obviously partner with some of our townships nearby to provide fire services. So needing to really communicate well with them and show them the changes that we're making, and give them some good insight as to why we're doing that. Another priority of the council was to maintain our current assets. So, invest in the maintenance of our current assets, make sure that we're taking care of the things that we already have, finishing projects that are already in place, and then ensuring streets are prioritized. Everywhere you go, people always notice whether or not a street's in good condition, certainly more so when it's not. So, kind of emphasizing those needs in our 2021 budget. So what we get here, kind of a horrible slide to be able to really see, but this is just the summary of our general fund, budget, and expenditures. As you can see, the budget itself is increasing from the prior year. However, a lot of the revenue items that are listed here are decreasing. Unfortunately, you know, our state aid is decreasing, some other things are decreasing. So then, to make up for that difference, you know, other fees have to increase, like property taxes. We did have some increases in expenditures, however, we're really trying to make sure that we're giving you a realistic budget that's frugal, but yet meets the needs to provide the services that citizens from the city expect. So kind of revenue factors in the 2021 budget. Again, LGA decrease of just under $95,000. So that, in and of itself, was a big hurdle for us to have to tackle right away. Municipal state aid maintenance, so the maintenance aid that we get for having state streets or state highways running through our community has decreased by about 15%, or projections now are closer to 10%, but still a significant cut in that, and that's due to the gas tax not coming in as favorable as before because of COVID and things being shut down and whatnot. When COVID hit, interest earnings and the interest market kind of tanked along with it. So our interest earnings are decreasing quite substantially as well from the prior year. And then, again, like I said, having to increase those property taxes, and then transfers from our liquor and public utility funds to make up for those Expenditure factors in the 2021 budget, so the main items, so previously settled union contract increases of 3% for 2021. We've got some increases in costs for the new public safety facility or the police department facility for next year when we move into that new facility, just because it's a larger facility, the electricity, heating, and cleaning, and those types of things are just going to be more with that larger footprint. Again, fire department implementing that per hour call pay for the fire folks, and then, again, catching up on some of those capital improvements. We increased the steel coating and pothole patching budgets, and then... We increased the steel coating and pothole patching budgets, and then I just wanted to kind of put this in there. There's no fluff in these budgets. These are all based on actual historical figures and cost trends and not, there isn't any arbitrary 10, 15% increase in this line or that line just because these are really realistic figures that we've put together. So what, oops, excuse me, what does that mean? So the proposed tax levy is not only include the general fund, it includes a variety of other funding sources. So the city pays for, or levies taxes for the library, the Fire Department, Airport Development Authority, sports arena, and then our Building and Equipment Funds, and then a host of debt service funds which goes to help pay back debt that was issued to fund certain projects. And so overall, the levy, proposed levy increases 6.03%, and it is the same as it was for the preliminary levy proposal as well. So we did not change that at all. So how do we compare to other cities? So this graph shows you 2020 LGA, so local government aid received from the state, and then the blue columns are the certified levy for taxes payable 2020. As you see, Detroit Lakes here is the fourth one in. You know, the ones that have the lower certified levy amounts than us obviously received a lot more LGA than we did. So I think this kind of goes to show that, you know, we're doing well with what we've got, and I think we're being really responsible in keeping our levy, you know, commensurate with others, even, you know, even those others, even though those others get a lot more stated than we do. So just a little bit of a, oops, excuse me, little rundown on the Minnesota property tax system. So January 1st of each year, the assessor determines properties' tax values. They're not taxed directly on their value, but rather on tax capacity. We'll kind of go into that here in a couple of examples, but different property types have different class rates. So residential homestead properties are taxed on 1% of the first $500,000 in value, then 1.25% after that. Commercial industrial are taxed based on 1.5% of the first $150,000, then 2% after that. And then apartments for more units are at 1.25%. So I'll kind of show you how that shakes out. This is our local property tax process. So in March or April, you'll recall that you probably received a valuation notice from the county assessor saying, "This is your proposed valuation for your property for next year's taxes." Kind of speak now or forever hold your peace. If you have issues with that, this is where in April and May, there's the Local Board of Appeal meeting where you can appeal those property valuations, either by attending those meetings or in writing. In September, in leading up to September, the city is developing our preliminary budget, and it must be adopted by the end of September. So we did that. November, last month, the county sent out proposed property tax notices based on those preliminary budget and levy figures that we passed in September. So the notice you received last month has your 2021 proposed valuation, and it takes into account the preliminary budget and levy information that was passed back in September. So that's kind of an estimate of what your tax bill will look like next year. And then, of course, finally today is the public meeting, a public discussion for the final budget and levy, and then finally adopting a final budget and levy that must be done by the end of the month. So tax capacity values, which is kind of the same as property values, you know, a little bit different based on those class rates, but as you can see, we've had a nice steady incline. We had a little dip here back in the post-Great Recession years, but we're doing quite healthy as things go on. This red line represents the net tax capacity that we spread our levy over. So that takes out any tax increment financing valuation. So that's the difference between the red and the blue lines here. The net city tax capacity rate, so I've got taxes payable 2020 data on here for us and a few of our neighboring communities and others that are kind of, I guess, what do you want to say, easier to compare. I have Detroit Lakes on here, 2020, so this was our actual 2020 tax capacity tax rate. This yellow line here is what we're looking at for 2021. So not a huge increase, and again, still well below all these other communities, even though that was their last year's increase. So we're very stable, which is a very good thing. So what everyone really wants to know and cares a lot more about than the stuff I've already talked about is will my property taxes increase because of this? What does this mean for my property tax bill? So I just want to run through a couple of examples. A medium value home in the City of Detroit Lakes currently is right around $170,000. If you are homesteaded at that property, you do get a portion of your valuation that's excluded from being taxed. So there's a formula. It's as long as your property is valued at $413,800 or less, you do get a bit of an exclusion if you homestead your property. So this is taking into account that this property would be homesteaded. So the total amount that is taxable, the taxable market value of this property is $148,100. So figuring out that tax capacity, that 1% factor is here, then you take that times the city's proposed tax rate to come up with their actual city tax bill for the... Sorry, this should be 2021, city property tax bill. So about $603 to the city for the year of 2021. And if your value was consistent from 2020 to 2021, this would mean that your taxes would increase just over $7, $7.5. So $7.67 from the prior year. And just to note, that is the city tax only. That doesn't include county, school district, special district, or any of those things. So what does this boil down to? The $602.59 annually are $50.22 a month for all of those things that, you know, we've looked at and discussed earlier. So thinking about your other bills that you pay monthly, you know, cellphone, internet, those types of things. You know, this bill really, in the grand scheme of things, isn't all that much for the services that you're getting from it. Commercial property taxes, so they're a little different. There's no, obviously, no homestead market value exclusion because no one's living at that property, or they probably shouldn't be. The tax capacity percentages are a little bit different, so those are figured here. And then again, multiplying it by that city tax rate to come up with their city portion of their 2021. Again, this should be, property taxes would be about $33.56. So again, if values were consistent from 2020 to 2021, these commercial taxes would go up about just under $43 for the year. If folks, I know times are a little difficult these days with COVID and whatnot. If folks are concerned about their property taxes and they'd like to know more about some potential property tax relief programs, there's obviously, as I mentioned, the homestead market value exclusion. So make sure that, you know, if your property is valued for $13,800 or less and you reside at that property or have a qualifying relative reside at that property, you can mark that property as homesteaded and get some of that valuation excluded from being taxed. So that's one program that's out there. The next two, property tax refund and then a targeting property tax refund, something that you should talk to your accountants about if, you know, at tax time, whether or not you're able to participate in those programs. And then also there are programs for disabled veterans, blind and disabled folks, and then also there's senior citizens property tax deferral programs. So any of those, you'd need to talk to the county to make sure that you're taking advantage of those if those pertain to you. And the complete budget will be available on the city's website, or you can stop into City Hall. I'd be happy to print you a copy of them all if you're interested. And I guess with that, I would answer any questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the Council?
Just a thanks to Heidi for all her work on the budget this year. It wasn't terribly easy, so we appreciate it.
Yes, thanks Heidi, and thanks to the Finance Committee and the Budget Committee for all your good work. Our action on this is... Item 7A, correct, Madeline?
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion for a resolution adopting the final 2021 budget and final 2020 tax levy.
The Finance Committee reviewed and saw moves.
Seceded.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the final 2021 budget, final 2020 tax levy collectible in 2021. Further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Zierickson?
Aye.
Wenner?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Lai?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Boke?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you again, Heidi. Can you send me that presentation or is that...
Yes.
Thank you. Sir, did you have an item on the agenda you'd like me to address or anything? Okay, very good. So we were back on the Public Works, weren't we? We had a few more items there, Natalie?
We do.
Go ahead.
So I'm gonna turn it right back over to Mr. Pratt then for E and F, tied together.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
One second. Here, Mayor, I'm gonna pop my screen up again. Carrie, will you let me share my screen? Okay, we've got a couple of items on the agenda that I wanted to address, and I'm gonna kind of do them in one, so to speak. We had a pretty lengthy discussion about the proposed improvements on Willow, Frazee, and Holm Street at the Public Works Committee meeting. I don't intend to run through that in detail. However, we've also got an agenda item approving the ICE report and its traffic study for the McKinley and Frazee Street area and intersection. And I wanted to just sort of recap the findings of those studies a little bit and talk about what we're planning on potentially doing there. There's a ton of information in there. I wouldn't recommend diving through it in detail. It's incredibly boring. But the takeaway is, the ICE report is the document and process we have to go through to determine if we can signalize an intersection or do some other type of control at an intersection other than a four-way stop. And out of that ICE report, the things that I think you need to be aware of is it does meet, that intersection does meet four of the five warrants that are needed to, say, signalize it. We actually only need to meet one of them in order to signalize it. We met four out of five. So, you know, that tells you something, I think. On the flip side, I wanted to be pretty upfront with the Council in terms of probably controlling expectations. You get a lot of feedback on this intersection from Council, public, you name it. Most of the comments are, geez, when are you gonna do something with that thing? It's really kind of frustrating to drive through. The interesting part is, we've got some options that we studied. And, you know, leave it alone, signal it, put a traffic signal in, or start looking at some form of a roundabout or mini roundabout there. And what's interesting is the existing conditions are not awful in the way that intersections are evaluated, which is primarily off of delay. You look at the average delay during your peak morning rush, your peak afternoon, or what other peak hour you might have, and you look at the average delay of the intersection at the different legs. And the delays or the intersections ultimately ranked level of service A, B, C, D, E, or F. F being awful, doesn't work, E's not a lot better. But generally, intersections that perform with a level of service A through D are considered acceptable. You just get a little bit more delay every time you go down. But right now, this intersection, other than one leg during the PM peak hour, which is sort of that after-school hour, one leg is a level of service B. Otherwise, we're looking at level of service A. So it's really performing pretty good, but yet we meet warrants, and yet nobody really likes the intersection. So what gives? I think the issue with this intersection, more so than the delay, is just sort of the perceived delay and the frustration because there's so many lanes of traffic pulling up to a common point at a stop intersection. It's cumbersome, can be confusing for some people. If you're not paying attention to who has the right of way, you start the, you know, the Minnesota nice thing for a little bit of no, you go, no, you go, and then pretty soon both people go. And interestingly enough, we do actually have an elevated crash rate at the intersection. It's above the statewide average, but it's not at a level that's considered critical. It's just above the statewide average. So what do we do? Traffic signal actually will decrease the level of service of the intersection. There'll actually be a longer delay on average, not a lot, but three to five seconds. So it'll actually get a little bit worse. The larger concern with traffic signals is the queuing and the stacking that could happen as a result of the signals. We might solve one problem. We've sort of made it super easy for everybody to navigate. Just follow the lights like everything else. But the problem becomes the stacking that's gonna happen back on the approach legs. We're gonna start to stack cars during the peak period past some of the adjacent approaches, like at Central Market or Holiday and things like that. We'll queue cars past there, so we solve one problem and create another. And that will be a problem if you start stacking cars across there. It can kind of create a lockdown situation. So the other option that we're looking at is a roundabout. The first thing I can tell you is we can't get a traditional roundabout in here. And when I say traditional, you should all be pretty educated on these at this point. But traditional would be some sort of an untraversable center island, similar to what we have out on Highway 59. We just don't have the space, and it wouldn't be practical to acquire the space. So we're back onto the mini roundabout discussion. We can do a mini roundabout. We have the space, and it would actually be quite a bit larger than the roundabouts that we just constructed this last summer, which, from everything I'm learning on these, and there is a lot of that going on, a little bit bigger would be a little bit nicer. We'd kind of get closer to that sweet spot of where you'd like to see these things, but it would still be a mini roundabout, so you'd still have that traversable center island. I would tweak some things, probably to address some of the concerns that have been raised. I don't disagree with. But we can do it. From a level of service standpoint or an operations standpoint, it would be a bit better than what we have right now in terms of delay. Not significant. You can go through the report and look at the numbers if you'd like. I'm not going to. But we're talking a few seconds here, a few seconds there. It's a little bit better than what we have right now. So that's a good thing. I think more importantly, probably what the general public is gonna see is it will sort of flow a little bit more smooth than what we have right now. You sort of just get into the queue and process your way through the roundabout. So it's better from that standpoint. It doesn't result in the stacking because you're sort of always processing cars, so you don't have that red light scenario that starts to stack cars back up across approaches. So we resolve that. We would also include a right-hand bypass, a right-turn bypass from Frazee Street to northbound McKinley because about 20% of the vehicles that go through this intersection make that movement. So if we remove that, that's a big chunk of the traffic that doesn't have to actually navigate the roundabout. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. We've got quite a bit of work to do there yet. We can do it if we want. I wanted to sort of caution the Council. Not that I don't think that this would be a good idea, but I want to control expectations that technically the delay isn't gonna be all that much different than what you experience right now. It'll just be simpler, if that makes sense to people. But we are looking at a cost to add the roundabout, right around $300,000 to add this. So my opinion is that's probably a bit cheaper than what it would cost to signalize it because I think our signal system in this case would be pretty elaborate and complex because I think we'd have to actually interconnect it with some of the adjacent signals at 10 and at Roosevelt that would stack on some costs that we normally wouldn't see. So I think it is less expensive than signals. I think it ultimately will work better than signals, but it's still a pretty sizable investment. That's really what I wanted to get across, and I take any questions?
What do you, what's your sense? What do you, what's your sense on pedestrian movement across? Cause, there's a fair amount of that at this intersection.
There is a fair amount of pedestrian movement across here. You know, like all things that are a little bit new, I do agree that there is a learning curve. I certainly don't want that learning curve to be at the cost of a pedestrian vehicle accident. There are some things. This is a little bit bigger. We can use a little bit different signage that we wanted to use down at Washington and Willow. We actually planned what most people would expect for pedestrian crossing signs, the diagonal ones that are up high with the arrow pointing down. And, upon installation, realized that they conflicted directly with the yield signs. As you're approaching this, you couldn't see the yield signs. We had to take them down and then go to those sort of short signs. Here, I think we'd probably have a better opportunity. We have a little more space. We could do something like that. We can do more elaborate crossing treatments. They just come at a cost. We certainly can go to the conventional pavement markings of the white blocks, things like that. The learning curve is that the crossing is just in a little bit different location than what it is at a normal intersection. And, I think that maybe catches some people off guard until they become used to it. From a study standpoint, I just sat through a training webinar on these today. Completely conclusively, they improved pedestrian safety compared to traditional intersections. Study after study has shown that, so.
John, how old is that intersection? Is that about 10 years on that now?
I think it's a little bit more than that. I wanna say 2007?
Okay.
Somewhere in there was when that was done?
You know, there's, you know, when that was put in, we were told that would be a 20 to 30-year lifespan. And, we did exactly what Essential asked us to do, cause they wanted, they wanted more parking. That's why they put that note out, cause they wanted to have parking for patients and their employees. So, we did, we did exactly what they, we did what Essential asked us to do. And, plus, we put that crossing down by the Kidney Dialysis Center also. We did, we put that in, cause they wanted that. So, they put that in. But, I'm looking at this study now though, and it says that over, over the last five years, we've had just 12 crashes. And, eight of them were fender benders only crashes. Two of them were possible injuries crashes, and two were minor crashes. So, basically, that's been a pretty safe intersection. And, we've got a lot of lifespan. And, my concern is that we spent money already, cause we thought we're gonna get a 20 to 20, 20 to 30-year lifespan out of that, going all the way up to Washington Avenue. And, now we're gonna come back and tear out what we had and redo it. I just, I just, I don't like spending the tax money that way, cause we've already spent money. We've paid for the project, and now we're tearing out something that's good. And, you keep saying that there's gonna maybe be about the same delay, maybe a little more. To me, it doesn't make sense to be spending this kind of money when we have something that's working. You know, we had lots of traffic accidents and deaths and all this, but when you're talking just 12 accidents in five years, that's, that's, and looking at the rate sheet here, it says that the average is .035. We're at .48. The critical point is .68. So, and, I mean, I'm, I just think that we've, we've got a good intersection. And, if we had lots of money, you know, we could maybe do it, but there's a lot of other projects that I think we can use this money for.
Okay.
I guess I look at this intersection and say, this is, kinda sets us up for future growth. I think that we've had a lot of businesses expand there. We've had a lot of driveways added, a lot more cars coming there. And, looking at the projections, that is gonna keep happening, gonna keep increasing. Am I worried about the timing of it? You know, is it now with the Frazee project, or is it five years down the road? Well, that I don't know. I know things aren't gonna get cheaper, but I do know I get a lot of calls on this one, saying, what are you gonna do with it? What are you gonna do? What we have isn't working. Well, is it a timing? Is it an accident? It's a combination of everything. So, that's where I get the calls from a lot on this one. And, I think we can improve this to make it better than what we have. It just comes down, in my mind, down to timing. Do you wanna tie it into an existing project, or do we wanna shut this busy intersection down another summer for another six to eight weeks?
The only thing I can say to that, Matt, there is an existing project. This project is good from McKinley and Frazee all the way to Washington Avenue. We did this project exactly what Essential helped us to do. This is how they wanted that road to be designed for their kidney dialysis and for their clinic. We did exactly what they wanted us to do for parking spaces. And, I guess I'm, and then John yesterday said that we're gonna do away with those. Well, to me, we're just wasting taxpayers' dollars. We've got another 15, 20 years on this project. I mean, to me, that's not, that's not being, you know, cash-wise and helping the taxpayers. We've got lots of projects to spend money on. And, I think this, this thing is working. 12 accidents in five years. It's tough to argue against it.
Your Honor?
Yeah, go ahead Dan.
Make a comment here.
Sure.
You know, when, when this project was, when this intersection was designed, I don't believe we had a roundabout anywhere near Detroit Lakes. That Highway 59 roundabout came quite a bit later. I'm convinced that if we'd have had some experience with roundabouts when this was put in, we probably wouldn't have designed that in in the first place. And, in fact, they were fairly new around the state. I think, you know, this is a good opportunity to make this intersection even better. It's not bad, but I don't think we need to settle for not bad at one of the busiest intersections in town. We're going to be reconstructing Frazee anyway. So, that, this is a good time to actually address this intersection, improve traffic flow in one of the busiest intersections in Detroit Lakes. And, as Matt said, set us up for the future. Thank you.
The busiest intersection in Detroit Lakes is on Roosevelt Avenue in the front of the road. That's the busiest one in all Detroit Lakes.
Yeah, no doubt Ron. This is one of the busiest. Thank you.
So, John, just to be clear here, one of the items we have is approving the report, right? The ICE report?
Yeah. One of the, the action items that I would like the council to consider is approving the ICE report.
Right.
That was presented. That doesn't necessarily mean you're committed.
Right.
To doing anything.
So, then backing up to item E, we're gonna set a hearing for the Willow, Frazee, and Holmes. At what point do we need to make a decision on whether we're gonna do a roundabout?
Well, my preference would be, of course, to, to get some feedback. If there's hesitation or concern, I would at least like to know that.
Tonight?
We're not committed. I would say that we could carry the idea of a roundabout forward through the hearing and see what sort of comments and feedback we get at the hearing. I'm a little concerned that we're not gonna get a lot of participation, given the current state of everything. But, we could wait and pull it at that time. I guess what I would tell you Mayor is that this was added onto this project. And, the reason it was added was council request. And, certainly it makes some sense. If we're going to do something, adding it to this project makes some sense. Does it have to be done with this project? No, it does not. And, it wouldn't necessarily waste, if you will, a lot of money. I think we could make the Frazee Street improvements, which do need to be done, sort of independent of this if we wanted to. You always have those concerns about disruption now and then disruption again later, but I think that can be handled. So, I guess I wanna be clear on that, that this could be added to a project in the future. We could take it off of this one.
So, what, the, what's gonna happen on each of these streets, John? Just overlay? Is it a complete reconstruction?
No.
What are we talking?
Frazee Street itself will be completely reconstructed. Yes, it is new up to, I think I'm still sharing my screen, yep. It was sort of redone up to, oh, somewhere in about here. And, but the utilities in portions of this are still not good. This portion is very bad. We would look at stopping this project somewhere back in, in here.
Okay.
Where the street gets better, where it was done in 2000, excuse me, in 2007. So, we would stop short. And, at that point, that leaves us that opportunity in the future to come down here and do something if we so chose. So, it could be done that way. Holmes Street itself is the other one, and that will get reconstructed up to just past Lincoln Avenue, which is shown on the screen here. The rest of this has already been redone with other projects. So, I would, I guess, point out to the council too, I mean, I can't speak to what the hospital or clinic requested back at that time, but they are the ones that are requesting the removal of the parking on Frazee Street at this point, which I fully support. But, they are the ones that have requested that.
So, if we set the hearing and you come to present the roundabout, doesn't mean we have to do it, right?
Not at all. I would like a decision probably at that meeting next month if we're gonna drop it. I don't wanna proceed with it any further.
Anybody have any comments in the council? Further comments? We've heard from Ron, we've heard from Dan. Anybody else?
But, you know, one thing about the roundabouts, I would like to see how these two new roundabouts are gonna work for a while too, before we stick another one in. Especially on these smaller ones. And, I, I am, I am a little concerned on those right now, when you see, because it's new, because it's new. Roundabouts are new. People are driving around the country. But, we're certainly having some issues with some of them here, with the M&amp;H one. And, we're just getting one going down on North Shore. North Shore, so I'm hoping that we can at least give those a chance before we say, let's put another one in, in downtown. I just prefer that we see how those are gonna work out.
So, John, you said you were gonna stop west of that intersection anyway, right?
We could stop west of this intersection if we wanted to.
We could put a roundabout in here at another time with another project, and it wouldn't really be doubling back on anything we do with this.
Not significantly. I mean, there's always a little bit of overlap when you do something like that. But, I think in this case, that would be probably pretty minimal.
Well, we've had some discussion on this at previous meetings, so I, I think you should keep it in there at least till we get to the hearing, and then consensus is to take it out. We can do it at that time. So, we've got two items that we need to give approval on. So Natalie, you wanna take E?
So, E is a consideration to a resolution setting a hearing for the proposed street and utility reconstruction for Willow Street, Frazee Street, and Holmes Street. And, I move to approve that.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to set the public hearing. And, that is going to be when? At the next council meeting?
Correct. Yes.
In January?
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion? Take a roll call vote. Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Lai?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Wenner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
The motion carries. Item F?
And then that ties right next into the item consideration to approving the intersection control evaluation report and traffic study for the Frazee McKinley intersection. And, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the ICE report and the traffic study for the Frazee McKinley intersection. Discussion?
Well, I just hope that we spent money for this report, and I would like to have every one of the council members to read this thing thoroughly. And, we've got a, we've got a great deal going right now with the, with the four-way stop. And, I'd just say, take a look at that and then decide whether you think we need this and do the extra cost that it's gonna take to put this other one in.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call vote. Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Yep.
Wenner?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Lai?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and with that, then we have Mr. Pratt again on the City Engineer Monthly Project Status Report for what's remaining.
Yeah, there's probably not a lot remaining, Mayor and council, but not really anything to report on West Lake Drive, Legion de Six, other than we had our court hearing on that. We're waiting for a decision from the court. We hope to have that early part of 2021. I think the latest they can render a decision is the end of January. But, obviously, the sooner the later. In the meantime, we are moving ahead with the design on that and sort of planning and getting things in line to move into construction next year. I think the question will be when we can start construction, whether it's right out of the gate, or if it's more towards midsummer. Some of that'll get dictated by how things sort of unfold. But, nothing to report on number two. Number three, the Berquist, nothing to report on Berquist either. That's number three. South Washington Avenue, I think we've talked about that enough tonight. Long Pine Estates, nothing to report. Number six, the Bristin subdivision. Expect maybe we'll see a little bit of movement on that coming up. They're going to, for TIP application in January? I think TIP hearing maybe, I think it's in January. In January. And, so I think we would see some, maybe some movement after that, depending the outcome of that. Talked about number seven, and that's it. Everything else we've talked about, so.
Thank you John. Any questions for John? All right. Anything else Natalie?
No, public works.
Thank you. So, Madeline, we're back to the Finance Committee.
Yes, and we are on to item C, consideration to refunding liquor license fees for November and December 2020. Actually, when the Finance Committee had quite a discussion about this and decided they wanted to add January to that as well, just in, in light of the fact that numbers aren't going the way that we probably would like them to go, and are anticipating Governor Walz may extend that closing, we would like to give those businesses as much help as we can. So, the Finance Committee moves to refund liquor license fees for November and December of 2020 and January of 2021. And, we would intend to take that out of the liquor fund.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to refund the November and December and January liquor license fees for our local establishments, and to take those funds out of the liquor fund.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
How does that work, refunding next year's stuff?
Yeah, Mayor and council, first of all, I apologize to Chair Sukie and the committee for not being at the Finance Committee meeting. But, you know, it is hard, because how do you refund something that you haven't received yet? How do you refund something that you haven't issued a license yet? One of the things I'd maybe throw out as a suggestion is, we have not refunded for January and February of 2020, or November and December of 2020. So, one of my suggestions would be, instead of refunding a future month, January of 2021, just from a technical standpoint, refund either January and February, both January and February of 2020. That for us from accounting is a whole lot simpler, where we're basically refunding the existing liquor license fee for 2020 in 2020. If you wanted to refund all four months, January, February, November, December of 2020, which would in effect, we would have refunded the entire 2020 liquor license fee at that point. You know, the, there's a spreadsheet in your packet that basically you double those amounts. And, that roughly would put us right where we were in March. If you remember, back in March, we approved a four-month refund before we got the CARES money. So, the exposure's basically the same. So, again, that's for council consideration, but I'd maybe consider looking at refunding prior months rather than future months.
I like that idea, and that doesn't jumble up the stuff we have to do with the state for next year, right?
Right.
Avoid that. Plus, they'd probably get a little bit more money this way.
Well, instead of three months, I mean, possibly four months.
You're talking about giving them four months instead of three, right?
Correct.
So...
I'd like to make a motion to amend the previous motion that we had, that we would go ahead and do January and February of 2020, and also November and December.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion to amend, as Kelsey outlined, that we would refund January and February, November, December of 2020, and not January of 2021.
Correct.
So, discussion on that amendment? So, I vote on the amendment first.
Correct.
I'll do a roll call vote. Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Lai?
Aye.
Sukie?
Aye.
Wenner? Bly?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
So now the motion has been amended.
So now you have a vote on the motion as amended?
Amended. Discussion on that amended motion. I'm going to get this one of these years. Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good work. Excellent. Okay, Madeline?
And I actually have to call everybody's attention to Jamie asked that very question during our committee meeting, and we couldn't come up with a good answer, a good response. So I'm glad that Kelsey was here for this one tonight. On to item D, consideration to a resolution establishing 2021 pay rates for the Detroit Lakes Fire Department. We discussed this in quite lengthy detail at the budget meeting a week or so ago and once again at Finance today, and the committee and I so move that we establish those 2021 pay rates.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to establish the 2021 pay rates for the Detroit Lakes Fire Department. Discussion?
One of the reasons we're doing this is we're trying to do something to help us with our recruitment for firemen, and if we don't do something, we might end up without having a volunteer fire department. So it's a necessary step, and it's a well-deserved one for the volunteer fire department that we have, because they put a lot of hours in, and they need some help in doing that job, especially all the weekends they're working.
Further discussion. Roll call vote. Josephson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
I think I got everybody. The motion carries. Anything else for the Finance Committee, Madeline?
I don't believe so.
All right. Public safety, Ron?
Okay, the first item is item 8A. It's a consideration for the approval of the summary of ordinance number 469 for the publication purposes only, and this requires a four-fifth vote. Kelsey, you want to explain what we're going to do on this?
Yeah, we just forgot when we approved the ordinance last month, usually we publish a summary of the ordinance, but that requires a separate motion of a four-fifths approval. So what we're requesting is council approval of that summary of the ordinance for publication.
Okay, Ron?
Okay, the committee recommends, and I so move, that we go ahead and approve the summary report.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the summary of ordinance 469 for publication. Discussion?
One question I've got, I know that doesn't change anything, we've already enacted this ordinance, but what sort of marketing campaign or what sort of campaign are we doing to make sure that we've got everybody on Main Street know that they've got to put a lockbox on their building, and if they don't, they've got a $200 fine coming their way?
Yeah, I'm not saying this is all-inclusive. I can just tell you what's been done so far. I know Ryan's done an interview. We did a press release. We issued a press release also to the chamber. On the chamber, I think they put it out in their news blast. So that's what we've done so far. Again, I'm not saying it's all-inclusive of what to do going forward, but at this point, we did the press release, and I guess I don't have anything else planned further than that.
Administratively, are you going to work with people if they're, you know, coming, they didn't know about this?
Yeah, absolutely. We kind of commented on that in the newspaper article. I mean, our goal is compliance, not to be putting out penalties and fines. We just want to get people to comply, so education's going to be the first step in achieving that, so.
Does that answer your question, Dan?
Yeah, I just think we need to make sure that...
Oh, I agree, yep.
That we're getting it out there if we're going to have the hammer coming.
Further discussion. Roll call vote. Suki?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
The motion carries by over a four-fifths vote. Anything else on public safety, Ron?
I'm going to have Chief Todd just give us a quick update where we're at on our new police department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've been giving some council members tours, so if any of you would like one, please let me know, and I'd be happy to walk you through the new facility across the street. Most of the interior stud walls have been built. They're pulling electrical wiring, doing plumbing, and then installing HVAC right now. Window installation is also ongoing on the north and east side of the building. They're starting to get some of the panels in on this west, northwest corner for the community room as well. But you can actually see the floor plan of the building very well now. Really pleased with how it's shaping up. It's a well-designed building, and it's coming together very nice.
So are we on schedule?
You know, I'm sure John can answer that, but these projects, there's so many different facets of a project, you know, like brickwork is behind, but electrical is ahead. So we're kind of going through waves of ahead of schedule in some areas, behind in other areas. I definitely anticipate we would be ready to move in in the spring, and by spring, I mean probably in that April timeframe.
Seems like it's going fast, but anyway, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ron, anything further?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Liquor gambling control. Dan?
Item A is consideration to approving an ad in the Detroit Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce Visitors Guide. This is for a 150-year anniversary ad. I don't know if Kelsey wants to add anything on this.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I have it on liquor and gambling, but technically, the intent of the ad would be to promote the city's 150th celebration this next year. I'd have the Liquor Fund pay for it. That's primarily why it's in Liquor and Gambling Committee, but that's what we're talking about. It's not, we would probably put a liquor store banner on the bottom or something, but this is primarily for the 150th advertisement for the Visitors Guide.
Okay. So liquor and gambling reviewed this, had quite a good conversation about ad sizes and locations and so forth. We recommend approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to, was there different sizes, or was it...
Yeah, it was basically for a full-page ad with located either on the back, inside the back cover, or as far forward as possible, page two or three. Page three, yeah.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call vote. Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is consideration to sponsoring Polar Fest for 2021. We looked at the past donations, and we came upon the $500 donation again for 2021. The committee reviewed this, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to sponsor Polar Fest again in the tune of, to the tune of $500. And that, does that primarily go for fireworks?
Correct.
Okay. Discussion on the motion?
I guess I'd like to see us increase this, seeing that the liquor stores had a banner year, seeing that businesses have been taking it in shorts. I think this is one that we could really step up on and help the business community out that gets tapped on quite a bit to donate to this and other special causes throughout town. I'd like to see us at least double that at a minimum.
So is there a need? Do you know what the need is?
Mayor and Council, I'm not sure. I mean, they didn't ask for, they didn't ask for more than what we gave last year, I mean specifically, ask us for anything more. They did state in their letter, they're not entirely sure if they'll have fireworks, but for some reason, if they don't, they would just carry our contribution over to next year. So I think there's still some uncertainties there, but they didn't provide me anything that stated, you know, for the 150th, please increase the donation. I didn't receive any correspondence like that.
So are you, but you're the one that's having the discussion with the Polar Fest folks?
We haven't really talked specifically about fireworks, other than just the communication that they're not sure, 100% sure yet if they're going to have it.
Matt, how about if we go ahead and approve this and then have Kelsey talk to him about your idea, and if there's more of a need, we could do that at the next meeting.
Yeah, we could, yep.
Would that be okay?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay. So right now, we have the motion for $500. Further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
And Kelsey, if you'd follow up on that, that would be great.
Item C is consideration to sponsoring the Women's Edge Speaker Series. We had quite a bit of discussion on this and whether it lines up with advertising for the liquor store, and we settled on denying this request, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in second to deny. Discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Dan?
Nothing further.
There is an item on the Public Utilities Commission. Madeline, would you go ahead with that one?
There is indeed consideration to accepting the bid and awarding the contract for the material for the construction of 115,000-volt transmission line. This is at the new South Substation. The bid was expected to come in between $900,000 and $1.2 million, and the engineering firm had it bid in different bid segments, which proved to be very fortuitous for us, and we accepted a total of bids for $325,688.08. The Public Utilities Commission reviewed this with vernon, and we so move to accept that bid. Those bids are different ones.
They were a little off there, weren't they?
They were.
Further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Suki?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything from the city administration side, Kelsey, for any of the staff, or any of the staff?
No, just under your agenda items, we have the extension of that emergency declaration, and the revised resolution is on your desk.
So that would extend it till the next council meeting?
Correct.
I would entertain a motion to extend the declaration of emergency until the next city council, regular city council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote. Bokey?
No.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Suki?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Motion passes with one dissenting vote.
Thanks, Matt. You're welcome. Keep it interesting.
The term of Gary Nansen is expiring on the Detroit Mountain Recreation Board, has expired, and Gary is willing to serve another term, and I would like to recommend that he be reappointed.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to reappoint Gary Nansen to another term on the Detroit Mountain Recreation Board. Discussion? Roll call vote. Suki?
Aye.
Bly?
Aye.
Josephson?
Aye.
Zeeman?
Aye.
Bokey?
Aye.
Mark Zierkson?
Aye.
Winner?
Aye.